Point one, I'm going to call this meeting public session to order. One point two, we have a quorum. One point three, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. One point four, I will now identify closed session items. Recommended expulsions, recommended suspended expulsions, recommended reinstatements, public employee assignment, reassignment, appointment, public employee discipline, dismissal, release, complaints, conference with labor negotiators, conference with legal counsel, existing lit, anticipated lit. One point five, public comment on closed session items. General public comment on any closed session item will be heard at this time pursuant board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes, individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. There is no public comment. One point six, we will now adjourn to closed session. I'd like to convene this regular session. Three point two, Gus Moria will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Moria servirá como intérprete en español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. Three point three, this meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out a public comment form, green form located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting in the table in the back of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Three point four, our pledge of allegiance will be led by Jacqueline Gaby.
Please stand. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Practicing our trust.
Three point five, I will now report the action taken in closed session on a motion by board member Casper Saleno, a second by board member Viegas. The board unanimously agreed to appoint Kristen Corliss to the principal of Green Acres Middle School. Ms. Corliss, she's on the screen back there. Ms. Kristen Corliss have served VUSD for a total of 20 years. She currently serves as assistant principal at Golden West High School. Prior to her current role, Kristen taught history for six years, served that as an assistant principal for both elementary and middle school sites for a total of four years, was the principal of Cottonwood Creek Elementary for five years, and served as a director for human resources development for four years. Ms. Corliss also served Lynda Unified as the learning director for one year. Ms. Corliss earned a Bachelor's of Science in Secondary Education, Social Science from Newman University, a Master of Art degree in education administration from California State University Fresno. She holds a single subject teaching credential and an administrative service credential. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, congratulations to Ms. Kristen Corliss. On a motion by, whoop, wrong one, sorry. On a motion by board member Gaby and a second by board member Belt, the board voted unanimously to approve a settlement agreement between the district and the parties representing OAH case number 20235051069. Three point six, revisions to the meeting agenda. There are revised item enclosures for agenda items number 4.2, 6.8, 6.14, 6.17, 6.19, 6.20, 6.22, 10.1 and 10.2. Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's board agenda meeting?
Motion.
On a motion by board member Casper Saleno and a second by board member Naylor, on favor.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 3.7, public recognition by paper, Mr. Hamilton.
Good evening, President Gamoyen, Superintendent Schrum, members of the board. To celebrate this year's Teacher Appreciation Week, our partners at Paper ask students to share what made their teacher special. They received more than 5,000 submissions from students nationwide, including students in our district. Paper chose 25 submissions from across the nation for recognition. Two of those are with us tonight from VUSD. I'd like to invite up Mr. Ken Clyburn and Mrs. Michelle Duarte. So we'll start with Ms. Duarte. So student Jacob Vasquez, a junior at Sequoia, wrote, "My first period teacher, Ms. Duarte, is the best teacher ever. She's so chill and relaxed and nice. Talks to me like an equal rather than treating you like less than because of my age, and she's always willing to help me no matter what." And then from Mr. Clyburn, Azad Tor, a ninth grader at Eldie Monte, wrote, "Mr. Clyburn has taught me so much over the last year. He has inspired me both inside and outside the classroom. I want to nominate him to show him how much I appreciate him. He is not only an amazing math teacher, but a great golf coach as well. Mr. Clyburn truly is the GOAT." We want to congratulate and thank these outstanding educators for the dedication to our students, and on behalf of our partners at Paper, present them with a small token of our appreciation. And Mr. Clyburn, an opportunity to come down and take some pictures with us.
Item 4.1, VISA Unified District Mission and Vision, second read, Superintendent Schrum.
Well, good evening, President Gamoyen, board members. Pleased to present for second read our vision and mission proposal. As we get started, want to again compliment our teachers and of course our partner Paper, which is, provides our academic tutoring 24/7 for our students in fourth through 12th grade that our board approved and students are able to access virtual live tutoring. And so part of Administrator Hamilton's work has been, how do we make sure that our kids that need that tool are getting access to it? And we see, of course, our numbers are reported in our quarterly reports and looking forward to, you know, getting off on the right foot with that at the beginning of this year and making sure our students and families are aware of it. So really appreciate that partnership and our teachers for utilizing that tool. So as we get into the vision and mission, of course, we'll go right to this work. And from a board workshop mission, what we spent some time on working on is, how do we encapsulate what we believe into a vision and a mission that speaks for our district? Now, keeping in mind, the vision and the mission are the high overarching statements. The work plans, the pieces that come with that to put it into action, the how, is in our beliefs and commitments, in our strategic plan that will be being developed. And then, of course, the board has the opportunity at that point to prioritize and set goals. And so from all of this, the board may say, we want an academic goal, we want a parental involvement goal, we want this and that, that will drive the initiatives and the actions in the strategic plan, of course, that will be coming and is underdeveloped and we're getting great feedback from our community, thousands of responses so far that will help build that. So we're really excited about that work. So as a reminder, our mission, every student engaged every day in high-quality challenging learning, meaningful learning experiences in a safe, supportive, and connected environment. And what we talked about with connected environment was just that, an environment that connects all of our stakeholders, our families, our students, our teachers, and further defined in our beliefs and commitments. And then for our vision, we said, VISA Unified School District guarantees that every student will be equipped with the skills and knowledge to excel and to be empowered to pursue limitless future, a limitless future elevating our community. And so what we wanted to do for second read this evening, of course, is provide public and the board an opportunity for further discussion. We want to make sure what we land on is something that we can all stack our hands on. There, you know, this is important words, but they don't have to happen tonight. So we'll have a discussion now. I'll turn it over to President Gamoyen, and then we'll decide what our next steps might be, right? And go from there. So President Gamoyen.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Right? Board comment and discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Belt?
President Gamoyen, I'd like to just address one small thing. I appreciate how, and I think we said this at our last meeting two weeks ago, that we want to make this as concise and precise as possible so that every one of our staff, and it starts there, but I guess, I also guess, the community too, as they see, what is the mission of VISA Unified, would clearly know what it is. And it becomes kind of the filter, as Mr. Schrum has said so very well, it's what we do every day today. And if it doesn't fit this filter, why are we doing it? So that you have to then justify if it's not honed in on our mission. And as I accept very well, as the newbie here, the core beliefs and commitments, because I think they are very well thought out and we've made them a very good guide, that as I was ruminating, I like that Dr. Otto and our two PhDs, Dr. Otto and Dr. Viegas said that the last time, ruminating on these words, I saw that we had highlighted two of the three high points of our core beliefs and commitments. And I realize I don't want to get into the weeds of too many details, because like Mr. Schrum, I want to call you doctor, I'm sorry, but Mr. Schrum has pointed out very well, the goals and the how is what we're going to then build into all of this. But as our mission statement is kind of like this conscience, it's this, it's, and I know I'm going to show my eight, the Jiminy Cricket, you remember that? Jiminy Cricket, who's always whispering, you know, that. I even thought about, and I know you're going to laugh at this, but again, this is my perspective of my growing up. In the 80s, we even had an acronym WWJD. Do you remember that one? What would Jesus do? And it was a guide. It was like, whoa, yeah, I want to consider that. I'm not asking we do that. But what I am asking is, we might add, what would mom and dad do? Because what I noticed is, we have, all students can achieve at high levels and demonstrate continuous growth. That's our number one core belief and commitment. And then we have the commitment underneath that. We, number three is, learning environment should be safe, supportive, and innovative. But what's glaringly missing is the middle one, family and community engagement is key to student success. And I know it's kind of built into all three of those, safe, supportive, connected. But if somehow, we can just say that. And again, what I want to suggest is that there's still some tooling we can do to bring that into focus so that everyone knows that every day, this is our guiding Jiminy Cricket, this is our guiding filter of what we are doing and why we're doing it every single day, and somehow ties in that it's not just suggesting that the support team includes families and the connection includes, but that actually says that, says, somehow says families and parents. So that's my proposal, if we can still take a little more time and see if we can, like I said, I'm not opposed to what we have. I just think we can make it even stronger.
Thank you. Any other comment? Board member Gaby?
Go ahead. So I'm not exactly sure on the wording that you're proposing, but I wholeheartedly agree that parents are essential. I mean, honestly, it's why I'm on the board, is my kids go to school here, I want our school district to, and public education, to be providing an education that really prepares our students. And so definitely, I think, every student engaged, yes. I mean, if we engage parents, that's going to, that's going to get us there. But in a mission, I'm concerned about taking the focus away from just what we do with students. That's why we exist, is our students. And yes, best possible cases, we are always engaging parents, but even without that, our responsibility is to our students. I really like what Mr. Schrum proposed there about, how do we have a goal around parent involvement? Because I actually think, in the end, that would be more impactful because it actionizes what we have to do, and it puts metrics on that, and it makes us accountable to that. A mission statement, you know, says what we're doing and what we stand for, but really making things happen and being accountable to make those things happen, I think is more appropriate in the goals. And really, parents, engaging parents and involving parents is how, it's how we make, you know, the most impact. I think it's, and that's just kind of my sense. I like how it is, and I would propose that then instead, we actually include parents in the goals or some goal about parent involvement there.
Mr. Dr. Viegas.
Thank you, President Gamoyen. I appreciate the dialogue from all of my colleagues here. In regards to both the mission and the vision statement, I kept thinking on this and thinking, you know, what else could we possibly include, or what are we not saying that we could be saying? And in my opinion, I would really like to include here in the, oh, two things. In the mission statement, I would want to add the word equitable, right? Every student engaged every day in high-quality, challenging, and meaningful learning experiences in a safe, supportive, equitable, connected environment, and connected environment. And with that, it kind of ties into what I would want to add, just one word in the vision statement. VISA Unified School District guarantees that every student will be equipped with the skills, tools is the word I would want to ask to add, and knowledge to excel and be empowered to pursue a limitless future elevating our community. And the reason I bring that up is because I think skills and knowledge are absolutely important, and we want to ensure that all of our students have skills and knowledge, yes. But I think in order to acquire skills and knowledge, students need to be equipped with the right tools and the necessary tools to achieve that knowledge and skills. And so I do think it's important to recognize that, right? We want to make sure all students have what they need to be successful, and at its core, that is what equity means. And I think having that in there would say something about, you know, the way VISA Unified is prioritizing equity in our schools and our community. And if, you know, I think that's great, I would love to be included, or I know other school districts have their own sort of separate equity statements. Maybe that's something we choose to pursue, but I think whether we go down that route or choose to add a word here in the mission statement, I do think it would be great to include equitable within that statement to show what we stand for.
Other comments?
I was going to say, and this is why these things are so difficult for those of you out there, because I'm on the complete opposite spectrum, and I read this mission and vision statement, which I know we worked so hard for, and I think it's beautifully crafted. And all I thought was, try saying it fast. Every student engaged every day in high-quality, challenging, and meaningful learning experience, can't even say it in one breath, it's so long. And so to me, I thought the opposite. I just wanted to chop all these words out and get straight to the point, which is, students will be engaged in learning experiences in a safe and supportive environment. VUSD guarantees that students will be equipped to excel, sorry, VUSD guarantees that students will be equipped to excel in the future, elevating our community. Like, that's where I come from on the other spectrum of things, which is like, if we just keep throwing comma after comma after comma, it gets very, it's just, and I know that we do that because we all try and put all these things in, but I remember during this board study session, the ones that were the most impactful were the ones that you could remember, were the ones that were succinct. And I think to Paul, to Paul's point, I can see what he's saying. I didn't even realize it really, that three of, that two of the three actually somehow made their way into our mission and vision. And I think that's something to consider is like, then what's the point of the three? If they're in our mission and vision, then what's the point of those three goals or principles? Like maybe, like we're already saying the same thing, and we're saying it kind of multiple different ways. And so maybe, again, paring down what our mission and vision is then really leads to, and how do we do that? Well, with these three things that we're identifying are super important, which is our safe and supportive learning environments, which is our family and our parents. And so, again, I think we're, I'm just kind of throwing a whole kink in this, and again, showing people why this is so difficult to do with a group of people. I would absolutely keep it the way it is if this is what, you know, I think that we've worked on this, our cabinet has worked on this. I'm by no means going to, you know, throw up a red flag and say, absolutely not. But I do think if we're thinking about this and we're, you know, engaging in this dialogue, that's my two cents.
Anybody else? Board member Naylor?
Oh, I voted instead. I do agree. I appreciate the fact that our core beliefs state parents, and I think that's very important. We all agree with that. But we're trying to get too much into our vision and mission statement. It needs to be simple. We talked about that, and this is very difficult for us. And we spent a whole day or half a day, you know, looking at this. And I do like the way it turned out, and I do think you got a good point, too. It is a little wordy, a little long. And if I was going to suggest anything, I would suggest what you said, let's cut some things out, make it simpler so that it can roll off the tongue. But I'm fine with the way it is, but I would not, I would not think that we add any more to this, because I think we already have addressed those concerns in our core beliefs and our goals.
I don't, I don't want to cut anybody off. If you guys want to speak, I was just going to say, do we want to table it? Do we want to motion to table it and come back? But did you?
Yeah, why don't you?
So to recap here, what I would say first is, to the credit of this board, we're taking the time to make sure that we're listening to each other again to get it right. This has to be powerful stuff or it's worthless. I would agree with board member Casper Saleno that making it sharper and tighter is better for us from a utilitarian perspective, utility perspective, because it has to be memorable in order to be impactful. But at the same time, I understand that other folks have other things that they wish to see in there and need to be convinced that they're there before this makes it through a final draft. So it's very much worth our time, I think, to table this issue and come back and work on it for a bit to get it right. I don't think we have to rush because rushing gives us something that nobody's happy with potentially, and it will limit the utility of it with our superintendent and our senior staff, staff across the district.
Okay. So. Excuse me. I'm going to make a motion. President is going to make a motion that we table this discussion for a study session or another board meeting. Do I have a second?
All second.
Okay. So on a motion by Walter Gamoyen and a second by Jacqueline Gaby, all in favor for tabling the finalization of the.
Quick question or clarification, is, are we simply tabling this or are we directing staff to basically take another stab at it?
No, we're, we are going to get together at the next board meeting or a study session to discuss it further.
Got it. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Good discussion. 4.2, partnership agreement with ABEL for 7 to 12 system analysis. Superintendent Schrum and Mr. Hamilton.
All right. Thank you, President Gamoyen, board members. Do want to just make a quick comment. I think that was a very impactful conversation, exactly the right call. You know, we want a vision and mission that resonates with our community and how maybe, how we're more explicit on how we connect the pieces to help the public understand that just because every word may not appear there, but here's where that is, right? And do a little bit more education and wordsmithing and work. And so I think that's the, I appreciate this board being willing to take the additional time to make sure we end up with something right and powerful versus something that maybe we have, you know, different thoughts upon. So thank you all for that. So very pleased to present a partnership with ABEL. And when I became superintendent here, there are several things that I heard and I've shared with this board before, and that many members of this board have also expressed things about, what is the rigor of our courses? Some of our top students, when they go to colleges and universities, I have heard from those parents, some of which are on our staff, say, you know, my kid was the top in this class here, but then suddenly they were middle of the pack at the rest of the school. How did that happen if that's supposed to be our most, you know, advanced class here? Heard a lot from this board about what classes we offer at what schools, particular around advanced, AP, those sorts of things. And then on top of that, who's in those classes? What do they look like? Do they reflect the population of our students? And on and on, right? And then how do we build schedules that both drive those things, drive equity, drive the opportunity for every student to access the class they need, but do so in a way that's financially stable? It's not financially stable to have one teacher teaching five kids when they're, when they could be teaching 25 or 30, right? And, but yet, how do we do that and not deny access to students? And so it's very clear that we have a need to increase our capacity and our understanding and our data around these systems so that as we engage in work this fall around a high school schedule, when we engage in work on how we allocate resources, we do so in a way where we have data that we can use and leverage to make these important decisions. And I feel as superintendent, well, I know as superintendent, that is data we do not currently easily have and is not easily accessible. But by building this partnership, that is something we're going to be able to get, but then further, bring in a level of expertise to train our schedulers on how to design schedules that are student-centered. There has not been training for our schedulers, and Rick will come up in just a minute, that I'm aware of in a while, right? And so we have a lot of great people doing the absolute best they can. But we need to add a layer of sophistication, data, and other things to help grow our district to where we need to be. And so I'm excited about this partnership that we're asking the board to approve tonight, and I'm going to ask Administrator Hamilton to come up and share a little bit more about this, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions. So I'll turn it over to Rick.
Well, thank you, and I'm back. Mark's gone, so you guys get me tonight, so sorry for that upfront. So let's start with what we hope to accomplish tonight in our presentation. So we're really going to be focusing on providing those high-quality learning experiences and then designing learning environments to support all of our students. Tonight, we're going to go through one, who is ABEL? Why should we engage in that work? And Superintendent Schrum kind of foreshadowed that a little bit. And then what are our planned outcomes as a result of this potential agreement? So ABEL, and I'm not going to read through everything, but ABEL is a group of education experts in the field specifically of schedule design. We think of them like efficiency experts for schools, which is a fairly unique skillset. We think of them like efficiency experts for schools, which is a fairly unique skillset. They will come to us and provide a level of support and feedback that we have not seen. I can tell you, you know, in, in our district, we did some training with, with our new APs because we have lots of new APs designing our master schedules. I say sadly, I am considered the expert in our district for master schedule. Just because I've survived longer than most people around master schedules. But I have not had training. I, I can tell you, I've never been trained just by experience. Twenty some years doing master schedules and Visalia Unified that, that I, I share that information with folks. But you know, my insight and what creativity I can bring to it is limited to, to just what I've experienced. So I look forward to having a company like this come in with a group of experts from across the country. And share insight they've gained across a multitude of districts and counties. So I'm, I'm looking forward to that, that work. So why should we engage in this? And we, we mentioned that a little bit, but we're aware of opportunity and access issues between our various schools that inhibit our ability to find universal success for our students across the district. We're also aware that now that the board has adopted our beliefs and commitments, theory of action and is working diligently on the strategic plan. We need to take a long look and provide access and opportunity to our seventh graders through 12th graders. This will be done through resource allocation and master schedule work. So our planned outcomes. One is to improve opportunities for all students to access the rigorous coursework. And you guys just mentioned that in, in your mission and vision that you were discussing. You've done some of that work already in adopting a third year of math for the district. So building on that work to ensure students have the tools necessary for the world they're entering. We want to now look at, at work to close the gaps in our system that might be limiting opportunities for some students. We also want to look at the graduation rate. It's high. We have over 90% of our students that graduate. But only about 50% of those are considered prepared on the college career readiness indicators. So looking at what we can do differently, how we can approach that. Improving our A to G completion rates, improving the results of numbers of students enrolling in college. Improving results in our numbers of students considered prepared on the CCRs. And then building our capacity as a leadership team in Visalia on how to create student centered schedules with adequate resources. So what that could look like, so year one project really has three phases to it. Equitable access, so they all have ABLE built into their little terms, but equitable access and opportunity looks at our seven high schools. And it performs a transcript analysis for this last graduating class. So they'll look at every graduating senior and analyze their transcripts on what, what it could be. You know, because they'll, they'll compare that to what our mission and vision, what our core beliefs. And are they aligned? Are what the students experiencing when they leave aligned to what we say we want every student to experience? And they'll provide feedback to us in our report. Then they come back with the resource analytics. They'll look at all of our middle schools and our four comprehensive high schools. And they'll inventory our assets. Now our assets sounds a little cold, but assets are students, staff, rooms, budget, our time, our bell schedules. And it matches it against, again, our core beliefs and commitments to all of those resources line up with what we say we want to accomplish with our, with our students. And then the sustainable design comes back with all of that information and proposes with two of our middle schools and two of our high schools as kind of pilot programs. What it could look like to realign our resources, to realign our schedules, to realign our master schedule process. To better meet the, the needs of our students and align that to our core beliefs and commitments. So we, we start with a small group. And that's how we learn as, as a leadership team, the high school leadership team, middle school leadership team, cabinet. All of us learn how to do this in a, in a better way, in a more sustainable way and take that forward to our, to the rest of our programs. And then they have implementation support that, that supports all of those using what they've learned across the years with other districts on how to best implement all of these changes and feedback. And so it's a one-year commitment with an option to expand deeper into our elementary programs or other schools, should we desire to do that in subsequent years? And with that, we'll take any questions.
Is there any public comment? Superintendent Schrum.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And, and you know, some of the, obviously this will be a transparent process. What they share back, we will of course, share with the board and others and, and determine kind of what some next steps are. The transcript analysis, I will just comment on, I've been part of that before is, is very powerful. And essentially what that is, is it backtracks this graduating class. And you can imagine the different ways it can break down, you know, into, into different demographics, into all of those things. And it basically says, here was a kid that was on an advanced track, say, for example, in seventh grade. Here's what happened in eighth grade. Here's what happened in ninth grade. Here's what happened after math one. And you start to see all the kids that take math one, but then suddenly what goes to math two, what goes on, and just using math example gets smaller. Then it analyzes who are those kids that continue the track? Poverty, demographics, all those things. What were the conditions that allowed that to happen? Where were they? What school were they at? All those sorts of versus maybe those that went down this way, what happened to, are they right? So it allows us to really get a deep analyzed, analyzed look at what's happening in our schools. Because we're, we're making decisions about schedules, we're making decisions about resources without a lot of hard factual data right now. And so while this is an investment, I'll give you an example. There was a system and Nathan helped me out. I can't remember which one it was. DeSoto, Texas, I think that engaged in this actually ended up creating master scheduling that saved about $4 million. And it was only through, just simply through better utilization of resources based on what was happening to kids. And so I think this can be a very powerful partnership. And so we're happy to answer any questions, but I just wanted to provide a little bit more context around that and what it is. And happy to answer any questions and thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Board comment questions? Yes.
My, my question is, how would we determine which two middle schools and which two high schools would be the sort of pilot schools once we get to that point?
So I think part of that is based on the feedback they give us because they'll give us now an, an analysis by school. And so I think we'll need, we'll look at those schools that, that could most benefit from, from some, some equity and some realignment. Off the top of my head, I would also say we'd look at larger schools and smaller schools across our district and look at how those would be impacted by some of those changes. Thank you.
Dr. Odo.
Yeah, this looks like a fantastic opportunity here. Back in 1999 or 2000, I don't think you were with us then, Rick. We did a curriculum audit that for a period of time had huge impact on the way that we looked at the work that we did at, at schools. And obviously that fell as, fell by the wayside over time as people got comfortable with it. We work in a world where things come quick and fast. We operate under what I've always considered bounded rationality. We only know what we know. We make decisions. This offers us the opportunity to expand what we know and to reconsider what we do, exactly as you state, Mr. Hamilton, to do a better job with what we've got. And I think this is an important first step for getting better at what we do. So I'm all very much in favor of this.
Board member Gabby.
Yes, and definitely second kind of that in favor. My question is, will they also provide recommendations or data on our bell schedules? I know we had sort of a scheduling committee that maybe not exactly sure what happened with that, but I do still think LD is on a different schedule than the other high schools. That impacts kids. Will they take that into consideration also?
Absolutely. That's part of that resource analysis, that second piece. Because they, they look at our bell schedules and how we allocate time because time is a valuable resource. So they look at every resource.
One of the powerful pieces that come from that is as they analyze the bell schedules. So if I go to school A, I may get 60 minutes of math a day times however many days. But if I go to school C, I get 50 minutes times whatever, right? And so they show at the end of the year, like if I'm a student at this school. Here's the resource, you know, the time is one of the resources. And so it very, to echo that point, very much will do. And that, that is very powerful because then you correlate that to, okay, how are the students performing? Given some of that information, right? Which then informs how do we do some of our schedule design? And the work that that committee is engaged in, all of this information is only going to further help them make decisions based on data and what's really happening in our schools.
And to speak to the committee work, it got paused basically because they, our, our bargaining partners struggled with the why, why, why we needed to change. So this, this really gives us some of that, that, that driving outside agency analysis to, to why we may need to do things differently.
Question, the questions.
Just another observation, President Gamoyen. This also ends the whack-a-mo. Mr. Schrum refers to quite often, we'll have real clear data on so many different levels that it's not just a matter of shooting the dark. We'll know exactly what we are doing well and what needs to be put into place.
Any other questions or comments?
Move to approve.
On a motion by Dr. Odo, second by Case Spears, board member Case Spears Solano.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And I just want to thank you for always bringing us on the cutting edge of technology. I know you've worked very hard this year. Thank you. General public comment, general public comment on any school related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for a discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's open public meeting law board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the, items on the agenda, therefore when, sorry. Therefore, when receiving public comments for items not on the agenda, the board's role is, is limited to receiving such comments. And the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibility. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes, individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. I don't believe there is any public comment. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull a consent agenda item? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All second.
On a motion by board member Neeler and a, and a second by Dr. Vegas. Is that right? Yeah. All those in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let me turn. All right. Board member reports. Whoopie, this is a good part. Okay, let's start. I'm going to mix it up. Let's start with board member Neeler.
Thank you. I just had an opportunity to go to one of the listening, a strategic plan committee listening sessions at Menlo King. And Mr. Pacina and Ms. Diaz was there. We had a couple of parents that participated. You guys did an amazing job. They had tacos for, for them to eat and babysitting services available. So it made it very nice for our families. Just encourage, I don't know if we have any more listening sessions, but it was nice to hear our parents, that voice. And I just so appreciated the parents that did come that night. That's what it's all about because we want to hear from you. And so I just want to encourage people again to come out and do the listening sessions. It's well worth it. I also visited summer school sites and I appreciate everyone taking me around. We went to Golden West and Global. And then we went out to one, one of the elementary school, I'm trying to think, Shannon. And our elementary schools, oh my goodness, the STEM and the math was amazing, what the kids are doing. They're all engaged. We also have the program that runs alongside that, the HART program. They're out there doing activities and then even in the high school level, lots of, of hands-on and, and good teaching. So I just appreciate the staff that stepped forward to give up their summer to teach our students. So thank you so much.
Thank you. A board member Vegas.
No report, just to thank you to all our summer school staff for working hard and, you know, working with our students this summer.
Board member Belt.
I too want to just echo that I appreciate all of our staff that we can ask questions as I posed yesterday. I called it a grocery store gander when a staff person bent my ear on a few things and I could answer some and some I couldn't. So I was able to refer them onto our superintendent and onto our operations director. Is that what we call you now, Eric? Is that right? You can call me whatever you want. But what I, what I enjoyed most was that this, this, this staff person in the middle of Food Max was comfortable with asking good questions, both of myself and my wife. I appreciate being on a board that isn't afraid to actually interact with the public. To say, you know what? This is what we're thinking and we just experienced or expressed that earlier tonight. And making sure that our goals and our vision is very, very concise and that it, it's going to shape far beyond some of our tenure here. Some of us are going to be, well, maybe longer than others, but we are, I am excited to be a part of this board. That's, we want to make sure that our district is moving forward and it's going to make a long range impact to our community as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Board member Case Spears Solano.
No report.
Board member Odo.
No report.
Board Gabby.
I gotta make it three, no report.
I, I want to thank our communications team. You've done an amazing job getting the word out about our strategic plan and parental involvement. Parents and community have really been involved. We have had over 13,000 staff, students and families that have answered surveys and been at that listening meeting. That's amazing. Thank you very much. And mostly I want to thank you. I mean, when I saw the picture of you guys at Linnell Camp, that just made me cry. So thank you. And superintendent Schrum.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Also echo that we will have a few wrap up last minute, you know, session opportunities in August. So there will be a few more to go, but the response rate has been outstanding. And so kudos to that team. And, and so all of that information, just for this board and public to know will be compiled and it will come about September, October, that will start to be shared back out. And themes generated around, here's kind of what we're hearing. That will then drive the creation of the strategic plan. You know, pillar, I don't hesitate to use a word because we haven't landed on the word yet, but, but the main pieces of the strategic plan that will drive the goals and the action steps and all of that. So a lot of work coming up, but it was important that we take this time to get the right feedback. Also want to give a shout out to our communications team. Some people may, may not know, but they here in about a month or so are going to have the opportunity to go to the National School Public Relations Association convention where they'll be picking up 14 national awards or 15, 14, 15. Simply outstanding. And again, you know, I think our community is seeing that from how we spotlight our employees. Come July, we will have the revamped website will be out. I know that has been something that's been very important for our community. And so I hope that our families, our students, our, this board is beginning to see us put, put into action what we said we were going to do. And so I thank you all for that. Also echo summer school had an opportunity, just the elementary program, I just have to give a huge shout out to our curriculum, instruction, teaching, learning, student services teams, ELOP, just coming together to create a simply amazing experience. All the way from how teachers were trained. How they were able to take everything they needed to go and put in place. And this is not your average summer school. This is active. This is STEM. This is our Alivo partners. This is physical activity. This is, you know, I, I just, it, it, I, I just was very impressed and, and excited to think about how do we kind of now expand that sort of approach into middle school and high school? And so that we change what that experience looks like for those students as well. Also want to let our community know, of course, over the next couple of weeks, the July 4th week, we'll have a day, of course, where the offices are closed. However, these next two weeks, really many of our district school-based teams, even though we do have some summer programs that continue. Tend to take vacation, well-deserved vacation. And so just want our public to know, you know, there might be, even though we're technically open, slower responses are limited over these, this next two week period and just certainly hope that people understand that because our, our school teams, our district teams, our leaders have worked so extremely hard this year and they deserve to be able to take some of that time. And so certainly want to wish everyone a great summer. This will be our last board meeting until back in July 18th. So we have a little bit of a gap for that kind of summer break. And I hope everybody stays cool, stays hydrated as it's going to be a little hot this weekend. And so that concludes my report.
Thank you. Let's move on to 9.1 recommended expulsions. Do I have an emotion?
All motion.
All second.
On a motion by Board Member Baby, second by Casebeers Saleno, on favor.
Motion passes unanimously.
Nine point two, recommended suspended expulsions. Do I have a motion?
All motion.
Second. On a motion by Board, Board Member Casebeers Saleno, second by Board Member Naylor, I think, yeah. All in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Nine point three, recommended reinstatements. Do I have a motion?
All motion.
All second.
Okay, who's second here? Okay, on a motion by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, second by Board Member Vegas, all in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Ten point one, Visele Unified District's local indicators and performance levels. Assistant Superintendent Demeo.
Thank you, President Gomoyan, Superintendent Shrum and Board Members. I am Andy Demeo and thank you for having me here tonight. I wanted to share with you the local measures. This is what the state of California uses to evaluate the effectiveness of our school district. So this is information only, just wanted to give you a picture of what we're talking about. No action is needed on your part tonight. Okay, so once again, we've talked a lot about our core beliefs tonight. Local measures gives us a chance to kind of look at the totality of the work we're doing to ensure that our core beliefs are lived out in the work we do each day. So you all have seen this picture before, I'm sure. This is a picture of the tiles that are used for the state dashboard. You'll notice that the first seven up there are indicators that are derived from the state testing that we just completed a few weeks ago. This is last year's board. In a few months, we'll be getting our new information so that we'll see what that looks like. And I'm sure we're going to see lots of growth, by the way. But the last five are what we call local measures. And different than the first one, local measures are self-assessed. They're either listed as the standard is met or the standard is not met. And remember, to achieve a standard is met does not mean that that area is perfectly done the way we'd like to see it in a few years. It just meant that we are using the process that ed code says we have to, to work towards that amount. So I want to just briefly share with you each metric so you know what each one is talking about. The first one is basics and it's talking about teachers' instructional materials and facilities. So for teachers, what this metric talks about is making sure that every one of our classrooms has teachers that are properly credentialed to lead that instruction. The second one talks about adopted materials. We have to make sure that all of our students have access to high-quality materials that are state-adopted. And finally, the third one talks about quality of schools. This is the guidance that says we must make sure our school facilities are in good welcome order, are safe and welcoming. And I'm happy to say for this one, the standard is definitely met. The next metric we're going to talk about is the implementation of academic standards. Now, this one looks at a couple of different areas for professional development. We're talking about every subject matter that we address in our school system. We make sure that we are addressing the professional development needed for that particular subject matter. We're also talking about the materials that are needed to make sure that it is being taught the correct way. The materials are up to date and everybody has access to them. We also look to ensure that we are addressing each of the standards that the state of California has outlined for each of those curricular areas. And finally, we have to make sure that our board policies align with what the state says to ensure that we're covering the instruction the way that we're supposed to. Once again, the standard for this area is met. Next up is parent and family engagement. Again, this is one that covers a couple of different areas, specifically building relationships through the LCAP process. As you know, and we're going to talk about that one next, the LCAP process must include community involvement. The second part is building relationships must have a robust model in our plan to talk about how we plan on doing that. And finally, the partnership, the partnerships talks about how do we make sure we're setting up those partnerships with families and the outside community? So it's not optional, it's in fact a requirement of the state and a plan that we have to have in place. And again, this also includes ensuring that we have parent voice, student voice and staff voice. Once again, the standard, standard towards parent and family engagement is met. The next one is the local climate survey. Again, this means that we have to make sure that we use surveys. And further, not only do we use the surveys, but we use the results of the surveys to drive our actions. And we have to have proof to show that we're doing that in lots of different avenues. Again, the standard is met for this particular metric. And finally, we have access to a broad course of study. Now, this is the, the point where we want to make sure that all of our students, again, all of our students have access to a rich and rigorous instructional program. So we have to take a look at our current systems to make sure that any barriers that exist, we have to get rid of those because we have to make sure our kids have access to that. And then finally, we have to document the work we're doing for those barriers. So for example, Mr. Hamilton spoke just a little bit ago about schedules. Schedules at times could be a barrier to students, right? So for example, if I want to take band, but I also need to take a math class, well, what if it's offered at the same time? So we have to make sure that those type of barriers are removed. And once again, we're happily able to say that the standard has been met for this particular area. So again, that's just a brief overview of what the local measures are. And I wanted to assure you that we will be reporting to the state that we have happily met all of those standards for our local measures. So with that said, might there be any questions?
I just want to make a point that if you go further down in the, in the, the presentation, each one of those are broken down in detail. But is there any questions or comments from the board? I would just, oh.
I have one question about the, the two misassigned teachers. What, what does that mean essentially?
So a misassigned teacher talks about the type of credential they have in their classroom. And when Mr. Dillon brings to you in the evening, he's probably going to bring one later on tonight, to talk about a special permit for those particular teachers, that's what that is. So we just have to let the state know that we're aware of it and we're working towards that.
Thank you.
I, I just want to make a point that when you look at the breakdown of each of these categories, I think these are things we can use when we're building our strategic plan, such as making goals for parent engagement, making goals for equity, because we're addressing barriers. So a lot of these things, because I really didn't get to comment on the vision and mission. A lot of these things, I think, would, would be more beneficial for us to put those in our goals that, than that, then that's something we have to accomplish. I feel like the mission, I know I'm going backwards, sorry. The mission and vision are kind of overarching what we want to do for our kids. And then we want equity, we want, we don't want barriers for our kids. We want support for our kids. We want to partner with our parents and looking at this data that can help us build our goals for our strategic plan.
Great point.
Any questions or comments? Okay, let's. Ten point two, public hearing, second read, local accountability plan. I'm going to open a public hearing, Mr. Demeo.
Thank you once again, Mrs. Gomoyan. Again, you made a wonderful segue into this presentation. You talked a bit before about the importance of including those guiding principles in our LCAP. Certainly that's what this program is tonight. So the last time we were together, Mr. Sullivan presented to you the first read of the LCAP program. Remember, this is that guiding document that we use to guide the work we have in our school district. So tonight I wanted to give you an opportunity to consider it and hopefully make a consideration to approve it. Just as a reminder, the LCAP supports all three of our core beliefs, all the work we're doing. To your point, Mrs. Gomoyan, has to answer these particular questions. And then finally, just as of a final reminder, this is addressing the needs of the students particularly that are low-income English learner and foster youth. You see the amount there and again, it's built on extensive community input. So with that said, I will entertain any questions you might have.
Is there any public comment? Any board comment or questions? May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four local control accountability plan?
So moved.
All second.
On a motion by Dr. Otto, second by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, all in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
And that close that public hearing? Okay, um, public hearing, twenty twenty-four VUSD budget adoption, second read. I'm going to open a public hearing, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, President Gomoyan, members of the board, Superintendent Shrum. So just like the LCAP, this is the second read of the district's budget. We don't have any substantial changes to the budget at this time. I'm going to jump just to kind of remind where we have our assumptions for building this budget. It is based off of the cost of living adjustment to our local control funding formula of the eight point two-two percent. There have, there has been a budget agreement reached between, at the state. And so we'll bring back to the board in August on the eighth, a forty-five-day revision where we'll take all of those changes into, into account. One of the, or two of the kind of bigger changes between what we have included in our budget and what's in the state budget relates to the two block grants. So the arts and music block grant and the learning recovery block grant. The governor proposed some substantial cuts, about twenty million to the district. The legislature was much less, they kind of met in the middle. So when we bring that back to you, we'll show the learning recovery had about a twenty percent reduction or about eight million dollars, but we're gaining back about seven million from the arts and music grant. So well, it's kind of a wash, but it is, it is better news for those two block grant programs. And again, those assumptions about our expanded learning opportunity program, changes in districts' health and welfare, our reserves still at eight point eight-five percent. So with that, I entertain any questions?
Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment or questions? Going to close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four VUSD budget?
Motion to approve.
All second.
On a motion by Board Member Naylor, second by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, all in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Item ten point four, resolution to approve, approve the expenditures of education protection account funds in accordance with the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, Mr. Hernandez.
So again, this is a required item that we have to present in open session about the district's expenditure of the education protection account. This is all included in our budget. The education protection account or EPA funds are all part of our local control funding formula. So there isn't a separate funding source, it's not additional revenues. But we do have to share how we plan to spend these funds for next year. And these funds are all spent, spent on teacher salary and benefits with no funds spent on administrator salaries. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions related to that.
Any public comment? Any board comment or questions? May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
All second.
On a, on a motion by Dr. Otto, second by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, on favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item ten point five, revision to board bylaw twenty-three, twenty meetings and notices. Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, President Gomoyan, board members. Bringing to you tonight our meeting, board bylaw, as you referenced here, board bylaw nine three two zero about our board meeting. We noticed in thinking about our structure for next year, one, a technicality under regular meetings currently, it says shall be held at seven, but actually with closed session beginning at five thirty, that is the actual start time of our meetings. And so currently, and so we needed to make a revision to this anyway. And so what we're bringing to you tonight is a, is a proposal to change start time to four thirty. Of course, that would begin with our July eighteenth board meeting and going into August and September, when we have only one board meeting a month. Keep it in mind, we want to have a schedule that allows both families to participate in the board meetings, to be here for a public comment, to be here for performances, of course, we'll continue that. But also yet respect the fact that, you know, our board meetings might be a little bit longer with once a month. And we have staff, principals, parents, families that, you know, obviously have to work the next morning. So our proposal for start time for closed session will be, or board meeting, but it will begin with closed session at four thirty. General session would begin at five thirty. I would also like to remind the board, there might be changes during the course of the year, a special call meeting or a time adjustment that's unforeseen at this moment. But our policy does, and ed code does also compel us, that does have to be publicized. And I believe it's seventy-two hours. Correct me if I'm wrong on the seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours for a regular meeting, twenty-four for a special.
Right, so all those pieces are in place. And so, and of course, every meeting would have, you know, the four thirty, five thirty on there. And so should there be any changes during the course of the year for a special meeting or something unforeseen, we of course still have to give the notice to our community and our public. So the proposal tonight would be to amend the policy to have a regular meeting start time listed as four thirty.
Is there any public comment? Board comment or questions? May I have a motion to approve the revision of board bylaw twenty-three, twenty as, as twenty?
Ninety.
Ninety-three, sorry, ninety-three, ooh, we would have voted on the wrong thing, ninety-three, twenty.
All motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Member Casebeers Saleno, second by Board Member Naylor.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item ten point six, declaration for need for fully qualified educators. Mr. Dillon.
Mr. Hernandez was looking out for all of us. So good evening, Board President Gomoyan, Superintendent Shrum, members of the board. This is something that we are required to bring forward to the board each and every year. The state of California requires that we bring forward to the board to authorize us to bring to the Commission for Teaching Credentialing the number of, of teachers that we have either on limited assignment permits or our emergency waivers. And this year, we have similar numbers than we have from previous year. You can see the information that's listed, and I won't go through each of those details side by side. But you'll notice it's not just for all of Visele Unified. Our charter schools actually have to submit separately. Granted, they are our dependent charter, so we work with them and we, and we put that together and we create this on their behalf. But you will see separate numbers both for VUSD schools as a whole and then separately for VTAC, VCIS, et cetera.
Any public comment? Any board comment or questions? May I have a motion to approve the declaration of the need for fully qualified educators?
I'll make a motion.
All second.
On a motion by Board Member Vegas, second by Casebeers Saleno or, oh, was that Otto or? Oh, it was, okay. And the second was Casebeers Saleno, all in favor? On a motion by Dr. Vegas, second by Board Member Naylor.
We're just going to leave that alone. We're just going to leave that alone. We're just going to leave. It's seconded by Joy Naylor.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting, okay? Okay, on a motion by Dr. Vegas, the second by Casebeers Saleno.
We just go with whatever Delia says anyway, so emotion passes unanimously.
See what you did?
Okay, ten point seven, warrant list, April twenty-nine, twenty-three through May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, Mr. Hernandez.
Good evening, this is our routine item to approve the warrant list from April twenty-ninth to May twenty-third.
Any public comment? Any board comment?
Move to approve.
All second.
I didn't get to say it. May I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
Move to approve.
All second.
Okay, on a motion by Dr. Otto, second by Board Clerk Gabi, all in favor?
Motion passes unanimously.
Whoops, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.